I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Warwick County Council Thursday, April the 6th, 6:00 PM. If you all rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge. Thank you. Chris, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The pledge is to lead us into the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
President.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed. He's on FaceTime.
Let me show everybody his face so make sure they can see to make it legal that he is here as according to our instructions.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
And Chris Wetstein.
Here.
I want to announce to everybody, you all have gotten this in the mail. The AIC's district meeting is coming up and I've already signed up for it. And it is one of those meetings that we can get reimbursed for because at this meeting, they're going to discuss legislation that affects all of our counties. It's the Southwest District and it's May 17th and it starts at 4:30 our time. It is a dinner meeting and it's at the Huntingburg Event Center. It's on the north end of Huntingburg. And I'd like to ask, Ron, have you heard anything more on Senate Bill 378?
No, they're just still working on it.
Yeah, because they keep listing it as it's referred to House Ways and Means. Another one says it's scheduled for a hearing, House Ways and Means, but and it's been that way for two weeks.
Yeah, that's that. That basically tells us there's issues with it and they haven't got together on it.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, that doesn't mean it won't come up and won't pass or may not come up for another vote. But the author has an issue with it with someone, could be the Ways and Means Chairman and so forth. They're not getting their act together at this point.
I figured it.
Yeah.
I knew if I asked you, I'd find it. You've been there and done that.
It didn't go to rural, so it's not totally dead yet.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Here we go. I'll write something down here. Video, video. Everybody else is here. And new business is approval of minutes. And I did have one correction in it. The, it's number six. And we approved all of 6A through 6H. But the minute says there's no discussion on presented items. Brad Overton made the motion to approve 6A to 6F. So you need to change the 6F to 6H. It's on page four. Anybody else have any corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the corrected minutes.
I second.
Ron Bacon made the motion, Rob Demmett second. And that is for the March 2nd meeting 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, 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 we're on call.
I do real call.
Oh, yeah. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed. Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Aye.
So it's seven zero. Now, the lit business. Let's see. That would be for edit, wouldn't it, the edit side?
Yes.
Okay.
For the part.
Economic development part. Additional appropriation, Ohio Township Park, $500,000.
I'll put a couple of pictures up here that you guys should see in some of the emails that went around.
Those were nice pictures that you sent.
All right. Good evening. Steve Rowley, Economic Development Department. And I hope you can hear it in my voice. I am excited. The Economic Development Advisory Council is really excited to have a transformative project to talk about. I could talk about it wearing a lot of different hats, as I'm sure a lot of us could. I could wear my parks hat or my resident hat or my trail hat or my economic development hat or my father hat. And I can talk about this positively with all of those different hats. Hopefully you guys were able to see the pictures that I did send and the summary. So I'll try to just briefly run through for the record. This is a 20 acre visionary park that will feature ideal active play space for all ages. And more importantly, for all abilities of kids in our community. Features, if you look at the overall park map, besides a fantastic giant playground, zoned, large engaging splash pad, will also feature ball courts, permanent lawn games, event lawn space, multipurpose field, walking trails, fitness stations and more. It's going to be a county and a regional destination in our community. We are seeing it contains amenities that we are in a unique time in Warwick County. We're doing a lot of planning. So if you guys have been to the public meetings for the comprehensive plan or the Parks Master Plan, it is featuring some of the things that we are seeing, the number one requested amenities for our community. More playgrounds, larger playgrounds, accessible playgrounds, water features, which includes splash pads, pools, those kind of things are at the top of the list. This park will be connected, it's kind of on the edge of the Wellness Trail along Libbert Road. It'll be connected via trails all the way to the County Vandenberg Line along Stall Road, along the Wellness Trail. You will be able to take a sidewalk or a bike lane or a trail all the way from here, all the way to the Castle Schools, all the way to Van Road Park, all the way to Friedman Park, all the way to the thousands of homes in multiple neighborhoods that are available. The timing on this is to actually break ground, land's already under control to break ground in this summer, 2023. And this park will be open in 2024. It's a perfect complement. Our other kind of big anchor parks in our community, Scales Lake, Friedman Park. This is not a duplication of either of those. They all kind of have their own unique features. This is having a whole bunch of different features. Economic Development and the Economic Development Advisory Council unanimously support the funding we're asking for today for this park because if I throw away my Parks and Trails champion hat, from an economic development standpoint, this is an economic development project. And I can talk all day about within the park boundaries, how great it is. But from an economic development standpoint, the investment we're asking for today will, will, will reap great rewards in the development that happens around this park. The retail, the restaurant, the residential, the new residential, the income taxes that it will drive. We've seen that around Friedman Park and the hundreds of millions of dollars in assessed value it put into Boone Township and the growth that's still happening out that way. People want to live in people, in communities that have these amenities. My kids are a little older, but I used to take them over Owensboro. Owensboro has playgrounds like this. Owensboro has extensive splash pads like that. And so economic development can look through the lens of just, this is a giant economic development driver. As far as for the financial request, the request is for $500,000 in funding out of our edit fund. We have more than enough. A lot of you have been to our economic development meetings. We forecast for three, four, five years down the road. We specifically say for big transformative projects, we have the funds to do this. This project will be no different than the other projects we do where we will have an economic development agreement in place for these funds. Our funds will be the last dollars in to this project and our funds will have clawbacks. No different than when we did the De Combe See Trail up in Linville or when we do private stuff in the North Warwick Industrial Park or along the Wellness Trail to protect those dollars. So an agreement will be put, be put in place. The $500,000, about 4% of this project. And Warwick County and its residents and its parents and its kids are going to reap 100% of the reward. And so I personally think it's a win-win. Ohio Township is the one that's going to have to maintain upkeep, keep insurance and stuff like that, that sometimes the county's challenged in doing with some of our facilities and some of our places. I consider that a really win-win. We've also worked hard to bring $3 million and we're awarded a $3 million ready grant, which is a regional, from a regional $50 million bucket to support transformative projects that make our communities places where people want to work, play, stay and live. So I can kind of end it there, answer any questions, but you know, I don't have enough good things to say about this project. I'm excited. I've talked to a lot of residents, talked to people at the Parks Master Plan Meeting and the Comprehensive Plan Meeting. I've talked to some people that have just moved in the community with small kids and they just can't wait for this to be done. I'm happy to take any questions.
One comment in clarification for my purposes.
Yep.
In the long range plan of the trails, did I read it correctly? That eventually from Victoria Woods up into that, in the old Boonville Industrial Park, the trail will be able to connect.
Correct. Our goal is to get into downtown Boonville. But the next step, and we've already funded through Warwick Trails and county funding to get halfway through, halfway to that trailhead up in by Prime Foods, that will be done this summer. That will be at kind of the intersection over there is where that trail is going to end. I've been talking with Jordan Agner. The rest of that land in the north is in a conservation easement. You can't build a whole bunch on it to already prepare for the right of way in the easement that would get us further north. And there's been some conversations, we need to kind of skirt the golf course and come in along a rail line to get into there. But that is actively in the works as we need to continue to connect, off topic, but we need to continue to connect the assets in our communities, the neighborhoods, the schools and the parks altogether.
Steve, I'm curious on this with the 15 million and you, how much, you said you have the money to do it. Did I misunderstand you?
No, I mean, as far as this is a piece of the gap funding. Ohio Township's going to be picking up about 65% of the bill.
Okay.
We got state and federal funding through the ready grant, which is $3 million of it. And then this is helping to close that gap to make this park and the overall map that you see possible to have all of those features and all of those amenities.
Okay, so this is kind of like a last piece to it or?
It will be the last dollars in contractually. And so just like any project, it can be, you guys are involved in tax abatement. We give tax abatement based on a company doing what they say they're going to do. We're going to employ X amount of people. We're going to invest. We're going to build this kind of facility. And if you don't meet those, you're out of compliance. And we put, we've done that with trails and all of our other dollars that come out because we want to make, we want the projects to succeed, but we want to protect our dollars. So that will be put into there that these are the last dollars in to this project that we see.
And that sounds, that sounds really good and everything. And I'm just a little bit confused because when Crystal emailed this, this information, she mentioned in there that it would help get the ready grant. It sounds like you already got the ready.
Correct. The ready grants are already been awarded, but the ready grant has parameters that the ready grant can only be 20% of a project. Okay, so you need to bring in other private and public dollars to make that happen. And so in the, in the presentation for that, we outlined where the rest of those dollars are coming from. And so this is going to help check that box, just like a company needs to come for compliance for tax abatement. That grant will get audited that we've done what we've said we're going to do for this park. So this, I get like, I guess the best way to answer you, this helps facilitate us checking those boxes because those grants come with their own agreements and their own clawbacks that we are checking all the appropriate boxes.
I understand that if, that this is part of fulfilling the agreement for the grant that you would.
Have additional sources, yes, funding this project.
Do you see any issues with that?
No.
Think of that?
No.
Able to get?
I do not.
And then.
This is the land behind the new fire station on Libbert?
On Libbert, yep.
So the lake's already there, right?
Correct.
So that was part of the fire pump purchase?
So the entire project outside of the firehouse is about a $15 million project. The, the land was purchased all at one time, Ted.
Right.
Outside of a little piece of it that was purchased separately to that is going to clear for some parking and some other areas for that park. But yeah, that, that acreage is obviously part of Ohio Township's contribution to this because they've already spent the money on it.
There'll be no revenue generated by this park?
So the park will be free and open to all. There is a community room feature of the town of the fire station that community groups will be able to, you know, rent and use and people will be able to rent and use that will have a lawn overlooking the lake. And you can kind of see it there in the map. So there is a space that will be a rental space, similar to some of the spaces we have at the Scales Lake Pavilion or Freeman Park Event Center. But the park will not have a charge to it. The park will be open and free the way Friedman Park is and.
So they'll support this park through their kind of the edit.
So, so supporting the park will come from Ohio Townships. They have a separate park fund, which is separate from all of their other funds, which I'm not, you know, I'm not a township guy or a tax guy, but they will fund it through the funds that they have. They will not fund it through ongoing edit dollars that we have.
So if we allocate the money, then we're finished with it.
Correct.
Just a gift.
Well, it's a, it's a grant and it's, it's to get this project done. And that's the way, you know, in economic development, I wish every project was this way. We facilitate with 4%, 5%, 6% to make something great happen and then we're off the hook. I wish I could do that for other facilities we have going on here in the community. They all don't work out as nice as this where we are making, it's a significant contribution here tonight, but it's a small piece of facilitating something that again will, will benefit Warwick County for decades to come. And we have the funds and the economic development boards, you know, plan to have that ability to fund things like this. We are, we are on top of our budget and we look years down the road.
Yeah, I guess I, back to that grant and everything, my thinking is that, so you got, you got to, the grant's not really, you don't have the money. Or you do have the money.
We have it awarded.
You have it awarded.
It will have to be, it, it's a, it's a reimbursement grant. So as they spend money, park spends money and you have actual invoices.
And then this 500,000 grand will help you receive that grant.
Correct. It will help us check those, those, those boxes and make sure we're compliant with the parameters of that grant. 100%. Additional funding has to go in because ready can only be 20% of the bucket.
Any more comment?
There's just not much out there as far as development right now. It's all it needs to be delivered.
So I mean, there is a lot of open space out there, but there's a lot of activity also going on. If you've seen from Walmart down the Wellness Trail, there's a lot of stuff going on. It is going to be an economic development accelerator for that area. And there's plenty of room to grow out that way, if that is a different way of saying it.
We're hoping that things will spring up out there and look like tax money from that.
Correct. Yep.
Are there any other pieces to the puzzle that you're waiting on, like, you know, take to repeat myself? But is this kind of the final stage or beginning or middle or?
I think we are at, from a, from a project getting started, this is at the tail end of the project getting started. So as soon as the project gets up and going, we will look for, like we do with Warwick Trails. We will look for naming right sponsors. We have a Deaconess Trailhead and a Wellborn Trailhead and Old National Trailhead and stuff like that. But that's once the project is actually, I call it like the Pinocchio Syndrome. Project has to be a real boy before no one's giving, you know, you're not walking in with the sketch of it on a napkin and getting that funding. So that, this project is going to happen. I, that's the best way I can put it, Chris, is we are securing the final funds so that this project happens and it happens in the size, scope, magnitude and impact that, that we've shown in the pictures.
I have faith. I mean, I believe you'll get it done. I think, and I agree with the thought that it'll be a, it'll produce income in a way that I can't really point my finger at, but I believe it will encourage businesses and, and housing.
It will have an economic development impact beyond, beyond the border of.
I think that's probably true. I, I kind of wish that you had the three million secured.
It's been publicly announced. I mean, it is secured the same way when you guys secure tax abatement. It's been awarded. You just have compliance to follow through. And so that's the best way for me to compare it is you guys award tax abatement. That company, if they do what they're saying, is going to get tax abatement.
And of course, the three million is just a small part of the 15 million. And you've got all that lined out.
Correct.
Ready to go.
Yep.
Has there been any improvement of Libbert Road? Like last time I remember going through there, you know, was a ditch on each side, a little narrow. Has there been any improvement to that since I've been through there? I remember.
Probably not.
So it's still.
It's on the radar with a new fire station and growth.
Right.
It's not on the calendar.
So, so what's the plans with that with all this growth out there with the money we're going to be coming up with? I mean, is there?
What is going to, what is going to have to happen is it will have to get on the highway departments. And I, Bobby was here, he could speak to it. He kind of forecasted two, three years out. So I can tell you like Epporth is going to get widened from Lincoln to 662, I think in 2025. And that's the way they work. And even the, the rendering that was back there of the roundabout at Oak Grove and, sorry, Eddie Ban and Anderson. As the growth happens is when you look at and you do traffic modeling and forecasting for what's needed. I can certainly see improvements being need to make, be made on Libbert Road. But that's while we help support those things. I don't want to speak for Bobby or for that. They look at what, you know, they prioritize stuff and what the needs are and what the funds are available. And so just like Oak Grove is going to be improved towards all the housing growth away from Castle North. That's, the growth happens and then kind of the improvement happens.
That just concerned me a little bit about the road because you're already bringing fire trucks in and now there, that road being so narrow.
Yep.
Be kind of like, you know, fix the road, you know? I, that'd be a bigger concern for me. That's all. I, I just want to make sure you had a game plan for that to come in the future.
Yeah, I understand and I would agree with you that that road's going to need improvement.
So how does this funding from Ohio Township from their, how does that affect their safety funding for their fire? I mean, this extra.
And I can let, I can let them talk to it, but the way that I, because I've asked that same question, Brad, is what's the difference is just like we can't take money from the parks levy and use it on something else. Townships have safety dollars and park chips have a park and revenue fund. And so it's like never the two streams can meet. You cannot move from one thing to the other. So I guess to answer your question best, they can't, and again, I can let them talk to it. They can't take money that's allocated for public safety and say, we need to cut some grass at the park and we're going to get that done and vice versa. These are completely separate buckets, if that makes sense.
Okay, so they've, they've got a parks and I, I guess, I think Chad, I've seen him out there.
And it has to do with assess, you know, bonding capability and all of those things. Just as we have, we have public safety dollars and we have edit dollars and they're both income tax dollars, but public safety can only be spent on this category of items. And so the two do not, the two don't mix. Is that appropriate, Chad?
Yeah.
We have a question. If you'll come to the microphone, identify yourself.
I'm Larry Bowles, Newburgh resident. I got a question. Where this half a million dollars, is it coming from the local income tax or property taxes?
It's coming from local income taxes.
Okay. That's what's caused our income tax to go up this year then.
Certainly not.
No.
No.
It's a million, it's a far and far cumulative budget. It's up a million too. It's out of sight. And why property taxes went up 20% this year?
Larry, I intended to call you. I've been sick all week.
Yeah.
And I intended to call you and make an appointment and I'll explain it all to you. It's government funding is quite a bit complicated. It's a lot, lot different in business and household.
This funding is coming from income taxes and not any property tax rates or anything else?
What's the, what's the cause of that, your budget to go up in, because in the income tax, that affects the income tax?
There's more people.
Income or your property taxes?
My property taxes.
Again, I'll let Ohio Township speak to that because that's not my case. I can tell you, I'm an Ohio Township resident. My taxes went up. I have my bill right here if you'd like to see it.
Mine too. Mine, mine went up $560.
And so.
Yeah, this, this would work better if I'm one-on-one with you. Then you could come back and address the whole council because I'd like to see if the one-on-one would work. So I think I, it's a matter of communication and I'll be glad, I'll call you because I've got your phone number in the email.
I've got my name on agenda. Am I going to be on agenda?
If you want to wait around and say something more that would be germane.
I'm just going to ask again, why, why the taxes have increased so significantly the last two years?
And I can explain that to you one-on-one. It's real easy to explain, but if we had a large group like this, it's kind of hard. It gets complicated. You want to talk to Chad? You got questions? Any questions for Chad?
Do you have anything to add? I think, no, Ron, do you have a question for us?
No, not really. I mean, I've got, my, my questions have been answered. I mean, this is, the rest of us coming from Ohio Township and, you know, I don't live in Ohio Township. So, I mean, I'll be able to benefit from the park, but it's not as far as the taxes, where the funding is coming from. I'm quite happy with everything and we're the last. One thing I did want to clear up was we were the last ones in. So, I mean, we, the region money is also the same way. If things don't happen, let's put it this way, we're concerned about everything happening.
Right.
And it's our money, but we are last in. Things don't happen from Ohio Township's perspective, our money doesn't go in there.
Right. And I see where.
It has to happen.
Where Steve has talked about that, that he actually has an agreement with them that it's last in.
Correct.
Right.
We, as soon as this is approved, we'll put that agreement together, but we've put together.
Yeah.
We've put together these for every single time we flip dollars out. We're not giving dollars out to people to spec, speculate or sit on projects or.
Chris, the ready grant's the same way, the three million that we're talking for that. If they don't do, if Ohio Township doesn't do what they're, that ready grant doesn't happen. Our three, our half doesn't happen. So it just doesn't happen. We haven't, we've allocated the money, but we haven't spent the money.
So could we do it that way? Were we allocated?
That's what we're doing. Basically, that is what we're doing. It's allocating it to happen if everything comes together.
Yes, that's the way the agreement will be.
Yeah.
That's a protection.
That makes sense. That sounds good.
Right.
So.
Any more questions?
I mean.
I'll call for a question, a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the 500,000.
Motion by Ron. Did you say something, Rick? Rick seconded.
Rick seconded.
Is, can I amend that or question?
We can discuss, yeah, discussion now. Yeah.
Okay. On that is, is just what you just said, I hate to re, you know, reiterate, go over that again, but that motion to approve, but that, do we contingent upon getting the approval from ready and everything else that might be needed, the other 15 million?
You can make a contingent on it's the last dollars into this project and, you know, it certainly needs all those other grants.
Not but a question. Yeah, I, I, yeah, okay.
However you want to put it, I'm fine with however.
Because that's the way it's going to happen. Ron, do you want to amend that?
Yeah, I'll be happy to amend it.
Rick, are you okay? Okay. So amended to approve contingent, let me write this down.
To be the last dollars in on the project.
Or contingent upon the ready grant being received.
Well, that'll, that really won't be our, you know, they'll have the same thing. If it's not received, we won't be doing it.
True, correct, true. And you're right.
Correct.
100%.
Okay, I've got this written down so I can check the minutes. All right, further discussion? All those, oh, we'll call, we'll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Nay.
Ted Metzger.
Nay.
Brad Overton.
Nay.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
So is that four to three? And the three are Rob Demmett and Ted Metzger and Brad Overton. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I got to go to the lacrosse game.
Next item, Commissioner Business, the 3A additional appropriation. Ohio Township's interlocal agreement, $99,393.15. Ohio Township's inter-local agreement, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents. And that was from ARPA funds, those federal funds.
Motion, ready motion?
Nobody's made a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second? Did you second it, Rick?
I was seconded.
Okay. Motion by Brad and second by Rick to approve.
Row call.
Yes.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed. Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
So that is seven zero. Three B, additional appropriation, jail savings, contractual services.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad to approve. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Rob. Discussion. All those in favor? Row call.
See, I'm going to keep forgetting too. Ron Bacon.
Yes.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed. Richard? Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Seven zero. Sheriff's Business and Deputy Training from May first, two thousand twenty-three to February ninth, two oh two four, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars.
And, and again, that money is not needed. He has the money with, in his budget in order to, uh, bring the, go ahead and bring the deputy on.
So salary ordinance only?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Brad, second by Rob. Any discussion? Mike, did you? All those in favor?
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed. Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Thanks, Mike.
Glad your ship made it back.
We had, uh, we have handbook policy reimbursements, transfers and corrections that need to be taken care of. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted on under one motion.
Motion to approve five A.
Let me, let me read them, please.
I'm sorry.
I like to get these amounts in here for the minutes because the minutes are the official record. Prosecutor is transferring from postage to equipment, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. It's five A. Five B is an additional appropriation from the sheriff, motorized equipment, eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I think that's from a, what do you call it when a check has been?
Yeah, insurance.
Insurance.
Reimbursement.
So it's a reimbursement. Then five C, additional appropriation, salary ordinance, retirees payout, according to our handbook. This is from the Commissioner's Administrative Clerk. The actual needed in the additional appropriation is five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars, where the salary ordinance for two hundred and forty hours is eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-four cents. Now, take that motion.
Motion to approve five A through five C.
That motion was made by Brad. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Ron?
Row call. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger. Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
Okay, that's seven to zero. And then, um, council business, the public service, local income tax update.
Um, I, I added that. Of course, there's been a lot of discussion with council members. Um, there's discussion to adjust the public safety side, nothing to do with the edit side.
And it's not any increase in income tax?
No. Adjust the public safety rate, setting a point two oh percent rate for a correctional facility uh, in order to get that jail payment, the payment set aside so we stop worrying about it, stop stressing about it, that it's off the top, it's done, it's set aside. So this is the initial, do you want to do that? Do we want to direct cliff in order to get this adjusted? So.
This would have to be done by ordinance. Public hearing.
So we're making a motion to authorize Chris, or a cliff to, uh, draw up the red blue, our ordinance? I'll get it right here in a minute.
I don't know if I want to send Chris to draw up an ordinance. No, you don't. Trust me. I don't like Chris.
You're looking for a motion.
A motion to set a jail facility rate at point two zero percent and the public safety LAT portion at point three oh percent.
Okay, I got that.
And that's, is that, uh, okay, now I get it. Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ted Metzger made the motion, second by Ron.
Okay, row call.
I want to, what we do, one of the, one of the real reasons.
Read that back again. Authorized cliff.
To draft an ordinance.
Okay.
In order to have a public hearing. Point two zero percent going to a jail facility, or I think it's called correctional facility, however it's supposed to be stated, and point three zero percent remaining for public safety, LAT, which is, you know, currently point five oh. So we're just dividing that, what it already is. So it's not, we're not increasing anything. We're just dividing how we're going to distribute it.
So twenty percent will be earmarked for the jail hallway.
Yes.
Correct.
It can't be touched.
And that will, what I wanted to bring up was the fact that there's this legislation we still have pending that could change how we are able to spend that money.
Okay.
So if we have our ordinance in place and that, you know, who gets what, the townships and everybody else who gets their portion, that can change at any time. So we've set aside that much. So we have the point three for that purpose. But we've set aside that direct amount for the jail, which we have to take care of.
Right.
And I think all of us, that was the reason we did this public safety let to begin with, because we knew that was coming. So just a comment.
And, and for me to comment, I know you had me do a lot of work on whether, what we can afford for a jail payment. And I confidently told you a certain amount and then the apples changed. Okay? So this way, we set it aside and we know what we have to work with after. Instead of, right now, we seem to be spending and then shifting over only what's left. Okay, so this kind of takes it off the top. So.
It's much better for us to build our home jail rather than the state mandate and the federal mandate. You gotta do this, this, this and this. Their way. Row call. We're going the right way. Any further comment from the council?
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed.
Yes.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
That motion is seven to zero. Now, before I ask for any public comment, uh, anybody on the council have anything to add? I've already mentioned the item about the AIC district meeting.
All of them. And I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure on the procedure, I just looked back at my notes to make sure I understand. Is, um, the two-step process for passing the, um, the newly amended local income tax ordinance? First is a public hearing and then it's a meeting of all. Are we looking at the public hearing in May and then vote in June?
That's what I assume.
Now, the only change, you can have the vote be in May if it's unanimous vote. So what you could do is have the public meeting in May, have a vote in May. And if it's unanimous, it's, it's done. I look at when it goes into effect, I have to remember that. And if it's not unanimous, still put it on the agenda for June and have the vote in June. So that's also an option.
I think we try to get it all done in one, in May.
Doesn't matter that, yeah, procedure, the only thing I have to do working with Crystal is to publish the public hearing notification. That does not change when you can have the vote. You can do it the two-step or you can do the one-step. So just putting that out there for the council to, to know. But regardless, the May will be the public hearing.
Okay.
And I think the good thing about, the thing we need to look also is with the how possible change in the legislation. Normally those go in effect in July, whatever day passed. So if we get everything done before that, there's very few that go in effect immediately unless there's some type of emergency.
Right. Remember from last time, I think it's the end of July, I asked you, or end of August, September first is the cutoff date for the, the tax that if you don't do it right then.
I mean, this is if.
June thirty is the cutoff date for the townships.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, the two different things. Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, sorry to interrupt on that.
No problem, yeah. Any other counsel?
I just want to comment on that, uh, a few weeks ago, Ted and, uh, Rob and I, we went on a tour of some of the county-owned buildings with, uh, commissioners. And I know they want everybody to go. I just want to say, hey, I recommend it. Um, I think, you know, Ted and Rob probably have their thoughts, but it was good. It felt good to see them. And now I got a visual for when, when these topics come up, you know, so. Get the chance, do it.
Okay, and Larry, you're on here and my recommendation is let's, if you don't mind, I'll make an appointment with you where you could come up here to the commissioners, you and I could meet back in the commissioners' conference room and sit down and I can lay down our budget and I can explain to you how property taxes work separate from income taxes and explain how it's a pie and it's cut into slices, basically. They call them levies and how it all works together. And if you can, if you'll be able, if you're, I'm, I'm hoping you'll be able to see the picture clear at that point in time. Plus I can explain to you really easily why my property tax went up and everybody else went up. And it's, it's not, yes, the county council sets property tax rates, but the rates is tied to the maximum levy that's allowed and, and the growth rate that's part of the maximum levy is the growth rate. And it, it's, it's rather complicated how it works and each, like the school corporation gets their share of the pie and parks get their share of the pie and county generals, what the sheriff's department and all the offices here in the courthouse and the judicial center operate under the major portion of it is in county general, but they're all slices of this pie and how it works together and assessed value of homes in twenty-two shot through the ceiling.
That's just baseline. The free pay drivers, the, the budgets from the, the school district, the township, the county, those dollars are applied against the assessed property value until the rates and those rates are applied by assessed value.
That is correct.
It goes back to budget for twenty twenty-three versus twenty twenty-two.
That is correct. And I did answer the question to you in an email as far as the county council.
That makes sense in your email.
That's why I need to sit down with you.
Right.
So.
Cause I want to, I want to know about the, the local income tax too.
I, I can do all that.
But I don't know how the state pays that. I know they put it in a checking account when they collect the money, but I know we're sitting on a billion dollars of local income tax.
And I, I can explain how that works. I can do all that and I'd be glad, be happy to do that. I just haven't felt good enough. You wouldn't want to be around me and get what I had. It wasn't COVID, but it was, it was something else. After this meeting, I'll get with you and I'll, I'll find a time we both can meet. Okay. Seeing no other business come for the council, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ted and I'll, I'll, I'll give this to Rick.
I'm going to pretend I did a row call and it was seven zero.
Seven zero. So we are adjourned. Rick, are you in Florida?